My watch says, finally says six o'clock, so I assume we're ready to go. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to tell you the meeting is being taped. We've missed doing this a few times. And we do recognize under MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, this meeting is being recorded. The meetings such as this are supposed to tell people that they are being recorded, just so they know. So we gotta start doing that again? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. We're still Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes.
We're waiting for the governor to sign it, I think.
We will be the select board one of these days, I assure you. And in terms of welcoming comments, I would like to say that there's two things. There's no executive session tonight, as you are probably aware from the agenda. And the next meeting is not two weeks from tonight because that's Memorial Day weekend. So it'll be Tuesday, the 30th, right here, okay? Acknowledgements and recognitions, well, mine is, and probably everybody else's, this on their mind is the town meeting that we had and the number of people that worked on that and the effort that was put into it. We'd like to congratulate everybody, and there are so many, and I'm afraid to do this because I'll leave somebody out and somebody will be unhappy, but certainly to thank the schools in letting us use the premises. The FinCom has done all Yeoman's work and did a wonderful presentation and pretty much ran the meeting with the help of the town moderator Steve Forrest, who did a great job, as usual. Numerous poll workers, registrers of voters, everybody to check us in, check us in twice, if you recall, we had the extra ballot there, and many, many others. So these things take a lot of, a lot of effort. And it was a great meeting. We accomplished a lot. And later on, we'll be talking about one of the items which has to do with with the override, but that's for later. So anyway, I congratulate everybody for their help, their efforts. We recognize them and thank them.
Thank them for no surprises, too. There was no sniping. Everybody got along with what they promised they were.
Yeah, that's right.
We appreciate it.
Okay, any other acknowledgements or recognitions that I'm not aware of? If not, okay. So I didn't mention Monday. This is Monday, May 15th, 2023. And the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. And it is a petition from Verizon New England Incorporated and N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, proposing to relocate facilities, pole 157A slash 84.5 on Fisher Road. Plan number MA 2023 hyphen 06 dated February 23rd, 2023. So this is, we are in a public hearing, and Jim, I'll ask you to take us.
We do have a representative here.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, come forth. And Jim, please, give us a brief introduction, if you would.
Yes, my understanding is that there's an existing pole that's in the right-of-way of a new subdivision road off of Fisher Road, and they're looking to move that pole south so that it's out of the middle of that road and off to the side at the intersection of the new subdivision road and Fisher Road.
Okay. Sir, welcome, and tell us who you are, for the record.
My name is James Murphy. I'm representing Verizon at this meeting. What this gentleman just said is correct. I took a ride over there before I came to the meeting. And to my embarrassment, the new pole has already been placed with two risers going to it. So I'm not gonna hide that from him until I read up front that someone screwed up on Verizon's end.
Well, we'll get through it, I'm sure. Is there anything more we should know about this, the pole and its location and what's that about and so on and so forth?
It's exactly where it is on drawing, or the drawing that was submitted. It's exactly in that location, 16 feet off the old pole.
Okay.
It has, like I said, two risers going to it. The communication cables have been transferred to the new pole. The electric has not been transferred as of yet. That's the only thing left on the old pole.
Okay. We do have in our package the plans and everything, for your review. This is a public hearing, so first I'll ask select board members to, their comments and thoughts into the public. Any questions?
And you're just scooting over an existing pole 16 feet, right?
Yes.
And you couldn't reuse the other pole that's there because it's not?
Yeah, the pole will be removed once the lines of all.
Well, so the one that's in the right-of-way is being moved, right, is going away. But then there's another one a little further south. Is that too far to?
Yeah, the one with the black dot is the one that's, it has been placed. It says on this proposed.
Yeah, but if you look on your drawing, there's one more a little further down there.
That's gonna remain where that is. Yes.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. So that was on EverSource's original design, the location of the pole, right?
Correct.
And that's where the location was, or did they get a survey from the contractor? Because normally they tell them where the property lines are.
Yeah, so there was a stake there, so someone had surveyed and put a stake there. The stake is still at the bottom of the newly placed pole.
Probably really wasn't your fault, then.
So like I said, it is put exactly where this drawing says it would be.
Okay, further comments, questions from the select board?
I just want, I mean, can we make sure before we remove it that the road's where it's supposed to be and maybe the pole's?
The road is also already in.
Okay, but does that mean that's where the road's supposed to be?
Again, sir, I don't work on telephone poles. I have no idea.
I mean, I think we might need to do that. Let the contractor, you know, identify those bounds out in the front, make sure the road's in the right place. Maybe the pole is in the right place.
I measured from where the existing pole was.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that roadway, when they constructed it, I mean, they haven't submitted an aspelt to us yet on whether the road's correct. So if we move a pole and the road's not in the right spot. I was wondering how this happened, so like I mean.
I don't know. Like I said, I got a notice to come to this meeting last week, and this is the first time I've been down to look at it. I do do engineering for Verizon all over New England, but this wasn't one of my jobs. So again, I don't know what happened or why.
I just think we gotta reach out to.
But I think you're asking Jim to do that, not the.
Yeah, I mean, I just, we gotta let it put the pole where it's supposed to. I just wanna make sure we move this pole. We move, somebody gave you that location and put it in now, and we're claiming it's wrong just because the road's where it is. But we don't know that the road's where it's supposed to be because we don't have any of that paperwork.
So I think the proposed, the proposed location where the pole is now, the new pole, is where you want it to go. The old pole was existing. That was in the center of the newly constructed road. So they just, they moved it too quick, right? They moved the.
So you replaced the pole.
They replaced it.
So that solves that problem.
I'm over approval of the pole relocation.
Well, you could do the motion and then discuss, and then in the discussion, we could have the public.
Well, I was gonna ask you to address it and send a letter without concern that it got done before it was approved. But a motion, have Jim send it?
Is the maker of the motion willing to change it?
No, I would draw my motion.
Because, I mean, I understand it's a thing that we need to get done so they can get power out there, so it's.
Still gonna throw it to who, right?
So the motion is withdrawn, so where do we stand?
I just wanted to see if there was any others that were concerned if it's done wrong. I don't wanna move it.
Yeah, okay. All right. So this is a public hearing. First of all, any other questions from the select board? If not, are there any public comments? This is a public hearing.
Okay.
All right, so.
Oh, they've had the opportunity. So yeah, I'll move some of the strong ones, but I just wanna add that we send a follow-up letter to Verizon without concern that it was done before it was approved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, and capable of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? The passage unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item that closes the public hearing portion of this meeting. The next item is licenses and permits. There is 1-2A is a request from the Holy Ghost Club, 171 Sodom Road, for a one-day all-alcohol beverage license for clam boil on Friday, May 19th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Jim, give us some info about that. I know it's in the package.
We do have reports from the police department. These are pretty standard, as the Holy Ghost Club would recommend approval.
I'm.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? This is not, is anybody here from the Holy Ghost Organization? Okay. This is not a public hearing at the moment, but I wouldn't entertain any comments or any questions. We're a small group tonight. If not, we'll assume it's time to vote. All in favor, and capable of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously. Paula, thank you. Appointments and resignations is our next category. There are two. The first is from Beverly Bish. To appoint Kathleen Hertzler to the part-time position of transportation clerk. Feel free to come forward.
Good evening again.
For the record, we know who you are, but.
Beverly Bish, Director, Senior, Director of the Senior Center of Westport.
And Kathleen Hertzler?
I'm Kathleen. Hello, everyone.
Glad to have you here.
We had our transportation clerk designed, retired, actually. She'd been there for nine years, and she retired, so we had to put an ad in the paper. And we had 30 resumes, out-of-the-city resumes. I wanted to interview three people. Two people showed for the three interviews, one person didn't. Kathleen has a good background for transportation, so we offered her the position, and she accepted.
Okay.
I'm so excited.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you very much.
Questions, comments from select board?
Do you wanna tell them a little bit about your background? My 20-plus experience and 20 years, 20 years' experience in the transportation business. Working for Coca-Cola, I had like 12 and a half before they restructured, but I loved it there. I loved what I was doing. And I loved meeting Beverly, so. She's got a fit right then.
Yeah, sounds cheerful, though.
Great.
All over.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
You understand it's one of my grants, I want that position, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All indicate aye, all indicate in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? There are none? The passage unanimously. Paula, thank you. Nice meeting you.
Thank you. Nice meeting, everyone.
Can we just ask at Beverly if there's any updates or anything going on at the Council on Aging that we should know about?
Go ahead.
Actually, on Wednesday afternoon at 1:30, we have an illusionist, Lynn Dillies. People may know who she is from the town. I don't, but I know a lot of people do. She's coming in to do a show for us. On Friday, we have attorney Jane Sullivan coming in. In May, it's Massachusetts Bar Association offers free legal services to seniors. She comes in and she talks about estate planning and all of the things that go along with retiring and seniors and estate and everything. So she'll be in on Friday, Friday afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00. Trying to think of what else. I'm still applying for grants.
Be better.
So, yeah, I'm applying for grants. I will be, I'm hoping, do I have to request from the board to put another ad in the paper for the transportation clerk? Because I, I'm sorry. It's not the transportation clerk position. It's my other position, assistant to the director. That was, I'm confused about that position. That was approved at the town meeting, at the meeting that you had on May 2nd. And I didn't, because it went to the personal board, and I didn't realize I haven't been here. I thought I had to go to the personal board, come here, and then it went to town meeting, but that happened backwards. So do I, I have to put in a letter to request from the board to approve that, correct?
Yeah, maybe you go ahead.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure because I.
To post the position.
Yes, okay. So again, I will be back in another two weeks.
Two weeks and one day.
Two weeks, yeah, on Tuesday, after my vacation. Next week, I'll be on vacation. And we just, we just keep rolling along, and I just keep finding grants. DOT is putting out a $10,000 grant for operation money funds for operating the transportation systems, which I think is great because I'm certain we weren't able to do it in the southeastern region transportation. They weren't doing operations money. They were only doing grant money for vans. But I have the vans now, so I'm hoping that they'll give us $10,000. So I'm gonna be doing that. That's due sometime in June. So I'll be sending that out, so.
Okay.
Other than that, we're just.
Thank you for that report.
Moving along. Great.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Next item is 3B, request from the Finance Committee to appoint Lawrence Holsworth to be on the Infrastructure Oversight Committee. Is Mr. Holsworth here this evening?
No.
He was at our meeting, though. He's ready to go.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll move him.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, and capable of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have action items. Section 4 on the agenda. Okay, 4A is a request from Westport Route 88 Solar LLC to amend payment in lieu of taxes on pilot, so-called agreement. Jim, explain to us what this is all about.
So this is a solar project for Route 88. I think it's Sullivan Drive?
Yeah, it's a private road. I don't know why that, the boy knows that's my family's private road, but they own a different road on the side of it. Anyways.
So last June, 21 of June, June or July, the pilot agreement was approved by the board and the developers for the payment in lieu of taxes for this solar project. They've been moving along with the project. As they have, they reviewed the agreement. The law changed in June of that same year prior to that agreement being approved. And the agreement referenced the old regulations, so they've requested that the agreement be amended to reference the new regulations. And there were a couple of other minor changes, very minor. There's a 2.5% escalator, yearly escalator in the pilot that was included in the appendix, but it wasn't included in the written document, so it clarified that. But beyond that, there were a couple of typos that were corrected, and that's it. So we're amending an agreement that was previously approved with very few changes, if any, mainly clerical. The main change was that it references the new statute, which it should have when it was done in the first place. So I would recommend that the board approve the amendment as requested.
I have a question here. The people in the audience don't see this, but in our package, you had, we had the copy of the contract with the terms in it, but then you had a comparison.
I think it's something like a document.
Yeah, he was looking at the annual schedule in terms of an assessment. Then there was this pilot agreement separately, and he was like, the cost benefit of both? Could you give us some guidance on that, which one?
So we have nine pilot agreements that were approved prior to the law being changed in June of '21. In those, I think, you know, this is a recommendation through the assessor's office as well, that it was clear that based on the pilot agreements, the solar developers would be paying more over the course of the 20-year period through the payment in lieu of taxes than they would be if they were paying the personal property tax on the solar panels. To give you one example, it would have been for a 5-megawatt solar farm over the 20-year period. They would have paid $767,000 in taxes if they would be assessed for personal property. But through the pilot, it would be close to $1.3 million. Now, there's a number of factors that play into this, tax rates and.
Sure.
But in general, they use an assumption with an annual depreciation of 7%. And back then, it was fairly clear that pilots were the way to go. I think there was only one town that I'm aware of, and that's Dartmouth. I'm sure there's others out there that assessed it as personal property tax, but most of the town attorneys at the time were advising communities to do the pilot programs for a number of reasons, not only because it benefited us financially, but there was an effort to have the solar, solar projects not pay any taxes. And they were concerned that if they were assessed for personal property taxes back then, that after a couple of years, they would be paying no taxes. So that was that. We've had this one pilot agreement, the one you have tonight, which is being amended, that was approved after the new regulations. And even after the new regulations, for the assessment or the analysis done by the assessor's office, it's still clear that we would collect more money from the solar developers with the pilot program as opposed to the personal property tax.
Which is what this is?
Which is, yes.
Yeah, okay. And that's what we had before.
Yep.
Okay, is that clear to everybody?
I, so I just, I just wanna call this out because there's been some discussion on social media about this where some misinformation is being spread, so I just wanna underscore what, what Jim said. If we, if we assess this as personal property tax, if it is just assessed and paid that way, you get, you get the highest amount of money in year one because it's the value of all the equipment hits in year one. And then, and then the tax, the tax you receive from the payee goes down every year. So your highest amount is in year one, and then they pay less and less every year until, until it goes away. Pilots are the reverse. Pilots start at one rate, and then they go up every year. So this, this 5-megawatt example, he just said the numbers, but it's, it's $500,000 more over a 20-year period for this pilot than it would be if we assessed it as personal property. And the second one that's, that I had to get clarification on before the meeting is that if you're assessed it as personal property, it becomes part of the levy. So you increase the levy limit by that amount, but, and it stays at that amount. But the person paying the taxes is paying less and less and less. So that, you know, $100 that they're paying, they're now maybe only paying 98, but that means taxpayer, residential taxpayers have to pay the other $2. So there, pretty much any way you slice it, the town of Westport, over the long run, gets more money from the person entering, from the payer, the taxpayer in the situation. And it reduces the burden on the individual residential taxpayer as opposed to if this was an assessment. So I think this is the way to go then. I think it's still the way to go now. And I, this is just a minor change we're talking about, but I think pilots are really the preferable way to go here, despite what you might hear on social media.
Could I just say one thing? Jimmy, I think we could look into what Dartmouth's done and how successful they were. How it's, you know, because we're into this a little bit right now. So, I mean, I know Dartmouth, I can remember, you know, definitely had the first solar before we did. And I think their setup was a little bit different. Like, it's kinda like what the landowner gets now, what the town was getting, you know, and the deal stood pretty well, so I'm not sure. I haven't followed it since then, so I'm kinda just wondering.
Sure, I can check with Dartmouth. One of the big differences with Dartmouth is they're, they have a tax rate that's different for commercial properties and residential. Oz is the same. So with a higher tax rate for commercial, they're able to assess the solar projects more than we would be able to assess. The burden would be more commercial than we would here in Westport.
But you think it's still, that's the way they're doing it, though? They're just doing it on personal property tax then?
That's my understanding is. And the main difference is they can, they have a high tax rate for the commercial as opposed to ours.
With this installation, this is consistent with the other installations we have in town?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any further discussion? Any questions? I'd entertain any comments from the public, if there are any. I don't see any.
I'm over approval of the amendment to the pilot agreement.
I'm staying in on this one, so.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, and capable of saying aye?
Aye.
I'm seeing it.
One abstention and four in favor, none opposed, one abstention. That completes that. Thank you. And thanks for the explanations. That was instructive. The next item is a request from Mr. Christopher Leonard, Director of Marine Services. Do hang a banner for Shell Stock, which will take place on Saturday, August 19th, 2023, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Mr. Leonard is here. I think you know him. Welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, so we are looking to hang a banner. Let me start. My name is Christopher Leonard, Director of Marine Services, the Harbor Master Department, the Shellfish Department, the Wharf and Sher, 88 Boat Ramp and Hicks Bridge Boat Ramp. And we are looking to hang a banner for Shell Stock, August 19th. It's a Saturday. We have the funkies playing at the fairgrounds. I believe gates are gonna open at 12:30, and four hours later, we should be done, and I should be cleaning up. Last year, we were able to net over $36,000 for the four-year, four-hour event. And we're looking to do it again, and we're gonna just try to promote the heck out of it until then. All money that is gonna be raised from this is going to buy shellfish for the Westport River. None of the money is going to salaries, gasoline, equipment, anything. 100% of what we make is going to go into buying shellfish to be planted into the Westport River.
Okay. Questions?
Chris, are you getting your banners made so we can piggyback? Was that what it was last year? Because we get the farmers market, one, then other ones going.
It's up to when we have space available. So if there's something that's coming before us and there isn't room, I mean, of course, we'd like to be on the top and everybody underneath, but that's not up for me to decide. I don't know how many.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I just wanted to know if it was made.
Oh, yes, our banners are ready to go.
But I'm saying, can it, is it the type that could be piggybacked? It's made, I don't know if it has to have extra hooks or?
Um, there are, yes, there are gusts along the bottom. So if we can, yeah, we can.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't have any issue down the road. You'd rather have it on the top, I believe.
I mean, yeah, we're trying to promote, yeah, we have printing and all kinds of stuff. So we used to have it later in the fall, and we found that doing it in the summertime is, is better results for us. And for the weather, too, you know, it can get a little gusty and rainy in September, October.
And when are tickets on sale?
Um, when I get the Eventbrite going, so hopefully soon.
I'll go through Ticketmaster.
Oh, no, 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 Eventbrite, not on what Eventbrite has been very good for us, for that whole thing.
All right, I'll move it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? If the select board is satisfied, if there are any comments from the public. If none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Anything else you wish to mention?
Um, sure.
Show of deliberation?
Yeah, we, we have the channel markers and rock markers in the east and west branch of the river. We're gonna put the slow no wakes in this week. We are slow no wake from the mouth of the river all the way to the Fontaine Bridge, which we stated in our cover letter that was sent out to all the waterway user fees that we sent out to people. I would like to add something that I forgot to put on that. And there's another slow no wake area in the east branch near Lake Island. It's a blind turn. It's a bottleneck. We have three slow no wake buoys there. It was something that I would like to have put in the cover letter, but it'll be in, coming next year. So just wanna let the public know about that, that that is a slow no wake area.
Slow, no wake?
Slow, no wake.
Slow, no wake, yeah, you were saying.
Yeah, slow, yes.
Slow, no wake.
Slow, no wake, yeah. Today was a busy day on the river for a Monday. We had a boat sink at the dock. We had a truck go into the water at the 88 Boat Ramp. We had a fisherman at the end of the town dock catch a swan. And we had another boat in distress in the let. Luckily, everybody was taken care of and nobody was hurt. And just on another side note, we have planted 600 bushels of the 5,000 bushel relay that we plant every year into the Westport River, so we're gaining on it slowly. So that's all I have. Keep it brief.
Well, thank you. Busy, busy.
Yeah, for Monday. All righty, thank you. Have a good night.
Stay well. The next item, 4C, is a request from the Westport Educational Fund in conjunction with the Friends of the Council on Aging in the Westport Middle High PTO to hold their annual Walk for West, Walk for Westport on Sunday, October 29th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Jim, want to mention this?
Yeah, I think they have the, I don't wanna say the first one. The first one at the new school last year. The second one, fairly standard event. We do have a police report from it. I'd recommend approval.
Okay. Is anybody here from the organization? Okay.
I'll move it with the police plumber's recommendation. And I don't know if everybody noticed, but he's, he's recommending that they all wear for us a vest. The volunteer is not, which makes sense. So I'm moving it with those recommendations, the detail and the vest. They're cheaper on Amazon.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is a request from the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation Massachusetts Rhode Island Chapter to hold the annual bicycle ride through Westport on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023. Is there anybody here from that organization? Present, Jim?
Again, this is similar. They do it on a yearly basis. We do the police report in there. I'd recommend approval. Again, this is similar, they, they do it on a yearly basis, we do the police report in there, I'd recommend approval.
Uh, I'll do the same thing, and, and the reporter stated it's the same route, and, and he's got a number of offices there and, and the vests, so I, I move with his recommendations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, the motion carries unanimously, thank you. Request from Matt Armando, Board of Health Director, to post the part-time animal control officer position. Jim?
Yeah, so, so he does have a little bit of funding left in his salary account, um, in the animal control budget. His approved town meeting for the part-time position for next year. He'd like to get somebody on board as soon as he can. So there is funding in the budget to do that, I'd recommend, recommend approval, it'd be a part-time position, less than 20 hours.
Mr. Jim, I'd like, I'd like to make, make a motion to deny that at this time. I'd like to make a discussion if you're.
Well, let's wait for a second, possibly. Is there a second?
I need to hear the reason first.
Okay, so there is no second, so the, the motion fails for the lack of a second, but that means we can still discuss it. So let's continue the discussion, Mr. Sors.
Basically, um, I'd like to see a little bit more job description of the whole board health. And one of the reasons being, I would like to put before the town the need of a town engineer. And mostly, and I see the budgets on all of these departments, um, looking for more money because they're overloaded with work. Some of the resources aren't being utilized fully.
You put your microphone on, Chris, and Dr. Soffley and the microphone.
Some of the, some of the resources aren't being fully. We have, we do have some staffing issues, um, that I'm aware of throughout the board of health. We have, um, he's, he's, they're, they're taking on some responsibilities that I believe are not the board of health's responsibilities in regards to stormwater and so forth. And I, I do know that they have regulations, and they have the power to enforce regulations for public health and safe, safe health. However, some of the things that need to be taken care of for public health have been ignored to look at some of these other things. And, and it's only because I believe, um, you know, the director's credentials, probably, he, he might be able to identify the public health threat, but he's not able to identify how we correct this.
He being Mr. Armando?
Yes. And, uh, you know, I've just been watching some of the meetings with the board of health. I'm, I'm also thinking that, that we might possibly be looking to, um, and I, I understand we might have to do this at town meeting, but create a five-member board health, because I, I, I see, you know, and I, everybody's aware that I, I've been on the planning board for the last three years, and I've, I've watched a lot of these different things go on. And, and I just, we have some assets in this town that are on all of these boards, and seems to me that we're not utilizing it fully in some instances, and we're trying to overload. You know, maybe, you know, I'm not, I'm not really trying to pick on Matt, but maybe he's taking on a little bit more than he's, than he should, and some of it can be shifted, you know, I'm just looking in the past at what we did with animal control. You know, uh, I, I mean, and I, I do understand that the staff at the board of health's been increased tremendously in the last five years, money-wise and so forth, from what the last director made. I, you know, I know he's been getting some grants, but, uh, even at that, there's some grants that, that are, that are out there that he should have been going after that, that are overlooked for many, many, many years.
Mr. Jim?
I was just going to, can you finish?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I move approval of the animal control, uh, of the posting of the part-time animal control officer position, but I do want to address a couple of things that Mr. Sors just said. So first of all, we used to have four. We, in, in fact, I think we had one full-time and four part-time animal control officers, we're down to one. That one person was on vacation, a greatly earned vacation, um, and we had calls. We had calls from the public, there was, the public needed animal control, and we didn't have them there.
Who picked up the slack?
It's possible, the police department has to pick up the slack when you do that, and that's a much more expensive, that's a much more expensive resource to have the police department do that than, than to have. So, I, 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 I don't think you're wrong in that we need to look at the departments, but I think that a request for a part-time animal control officer is not the right mechanism to do that. When we're budgeting, um, we, we can't, we literally can't even take this money out of the animal control line and put it to something else. We, we just can't, because the way the town meeting appropriated it, we'd have to go back through town meeting to appropriate. So I think that this part-time animal control officer is a necessary position. I think that it is important to the public that we provide this service to the town. I think any kind of beef you might have with the board of health, or any kind of re-looking that you want to do for staffing of the board of health, I think let's talk about that in a forum that isn't depriving the town of a service that is necessary.
I'll agree with you on that.
Let us pause just for a sec. Were you making, you offered a motion?
I moved to approve the posting of the part-time animal control.
Okay, the motion made and seconded. Now, we can have further discussion, and if you, if you speak, feel free.
I mean, we, animal control got bounced all over the place, police department had it, we had it, and, and board of health, you know, took it over, more or less to help us out and get things straightened out. So, I mean, yeah, you know, I agree, they, they need it. We, we did help a bunch, we had, I can remember doing three of them at once, and they didn't last, so, uh, they definitely need the help.
Other comments, questions?
So, so we're going to get a job description of this person?
There's a job description.
So, okay, all right, so.
It's in the packet.
So how are we picking up the idea?
We need to pause again.
That's Highway Department.
Pause, I'm calling a pause. You're out of order, Mr. Jim. I'm calling a pause because all questions have to be addressed to the chair. And then, if I can answer it, I will, if not, I will ask others.
Yeah, we, we, we can end this discussion on that, because obviously, we brought up the need that we need to look, look further into the board of health and build an respect. All, all of these that are asking for more money, and, and what, what their responsibilities are, I'm, I'm okay. And, and you brought to my attention, we need a, and help, I'll approve the recommendation. Now that I see the money's there, we need to do it, I can approve that recommendation. However, some of the duties that they're doing, I would like to know what, if it's in their job description, and how do we move forward from this and fixing it? Because I'm, I'm all, I'm all for, for fixing the problems that we have. What I'm against is practicing. And, you know, I, I mean, the board of health, we have a, we have a master plan, we have an integrated water plan, we have recommendation, recommendations on them. They haven't followed those recommendations. I mean, so, I mean, has, has he read them? You know, and again, I apologize, because I know this isn't the form, but I guess we can bring this up so in, in a future meeting, we can take up these issues.
Well, you have made, as far as I'm concerned, a number of very good points, very valid, uh, and they probably are worthy of discussion at the right point in time, properly noticed, and so on and so forth. So this action in front of us is one more narrow item relating to filling a vacant position for which is funded. So, uh, a further discussion on the motion, the motion has been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, I'll assume it's time to vote, all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, thank you for that conversation, it was instructive and worthwhile. Next item is 4G. Oh, I went right by Mr. Hartnett, my apologies. Request from Mr. Hartnett to approve amended job description for the principal maintenance specialist and appoint Robert Marshall to the position. Mr. Hartnett?
Yeah, so, uh, our current employee was hired as the maintenance staff person about a year and a half ago. The position was previously held by the principal maintenance specialist, which is a title which is one step above. Similar positions are at the library and at the Council on Aging, and those are both principal maintenance specialists. The job description for the principal maintenance specialist is probably geared more towards what he's doing. There's a, it's not a significant difference between the two pays, I believe it's about a dollar, oh, a dollar fifty-two an hour difference. There's a little bit more responsibility with the principal maintenance specialist. When we say specialist, I, I mean, the, the work encompasses a lot of different things. You know, we had issues with the electric going out at the Town Hall annex on Thursday, where the breaker went, and the transformer on the pole went, and we had to close the building down for the afternoon. So he was there coordinating with the electrician and the, um, I don't know if it was Verizon, I, I guess Eversource out there to get that going. Uh, if we have issues with the, the plumbing over there, which we've had over the last few months, uh, he's made the contact with the plumbers or with the, uh, septic installers to get those pumped out or, um, snaked, um, and the fixtures replaced, so, um, he also does some of the water testing that is required. We used to have a company come in and do that. Uh, he does the testing and sends it out, which saves us a little bit. I would recommend that the, um, job description, the changes to the job description are relatively minor. There's more clarification on my part, um, we just wanted to add playgrounds in there as part of things that need to be maintained, maintained, because we have the annex playground, I just wanted to make sure that snow plowing is, is, is in here. I believe it was in there before, but it, it just kind of reemphasizes that. So one, I guess, I'd recommend that the job description be updated and improved by the board. And two, I'd recommend that, um, the current employee be upgraded to the maintenance specialist, principal maintenance specialist position.
Is this a union position?
This is, they're both union positions, yes.
And do we need to be involved with the union to?
Um, we've had discussions with the unions, originally started with a grievance. And we said that we would reevaluate the position after a few months, and we've done that, and based on that reevaluation, this is my recommendation.
Okay, but the union is, okay. What is the pleasure of the committee?
Good, I, I saw the, the letter of grievance or whatnot, but I didn't see any kind of resume either. What is the skill that you said here?
No, I don't have his resume with me tonight, but I can just tell you, based on the experience at the only removal last year and a half, I think he's more than capable of.
So your family meets the requirements?
Yes.
The first line is a skilled, okay.
I am here.
Yep.
Well, we're not ready for you yet.
Well, if he, uh, if he just wants to stay with his skills, uh, but Jim's vouching for him, so. You ready to move it, or do you want to discuss it more?
Either one.
If nobody has anything, I'll move it. He's been doing the job a while.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second, but are you moving the job description amendment and the appointment?
Yes, you need both, correct? He's asking for both, so yes, I, I do mean both, sorry, I'm a clown.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion from the select board? The gentleman is here tonight, do you wish to say something, Mr. Marshall? You don't have to, but I'll give you the opportunity. You can, you can speak from the microphone.
Robert Marshall. Um, as far as my experience, I'll just give you a bit quick, I've done 13 years of estate management. Before that, uh, I've done 35 years of stained glass restoration, handyman, I worked for museums, so, skilled.
So the skill is handyman, you don't have any trade licenses?
I do, uh, HVAC. I don't have a current license, but I did go to school and was certified. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
This started out with a grievance, um, because there are two maintenance positions, and I was hired, my understanding, which I, I guess was, was a misunderstanding, was that I was being hired for the, the position that was done before, uh, for the person that left, which was, um, the prin- uh, principal maintenance person. I was designated the caretaker. So I've done the principal maintenance since I started, um, in, uh, I started in September, I started doing the principal maintenance in January of 2021. So I've been doing the job at the lower pay for this amount of time. In my grievance, I asked for retro pay, I asked for an increase in the pay because, um, as everyone knows, a lot of the positions are underfunded and underpaid. Um, that was denied, um, a few times. So in this amendment of the job description, the only issues I have is the playgrounds and the snow plowing, which are highway department jobs. And since the highway department has been cut, this is now coming on me. And as you all know, I'm, I'm a one-man band doing everything. So now I'm doing highway department, jobs are being put here as the amended job description.
Okay, uh, your comments are appreciated, but this is not the issue right before us.
Well, it is, because you're, you're.
I was going to address that question to Mr. Hartnett.
So there are some minor changes to the job description. To me, I think the playground was included previously, this just clarifies that the previous maintenance specialist did do snow plowing here at the Council on Aging in the library, so that is not, to me, it's not a change.
Yeah. Mr. Marshall, you, you are free to take whatever action you need as a result of our action tonight that's been made in the form of a motion. But it, it's really not appropriate to discuss that here, this is not a grievance hearing.
No, I'm not, but it is, and you're amending the job description.
We are.
That, that was my only, I just wanted to let you know that the, the amendments are highway positions that are being put on the maintenance position. That's all I have to say about it. I will accept whatever you guys want me to do as I've done from day one, so.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is that something you can address at the appropriate point in time? I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's in there, I mean, that's why we put it in, it's mainly the annex playground, we're not, it's not the other playground up at Bicentennial, that's still being done by highway department, or will be done by highway department, but, um, the annex playground is part of the town hall annex, and mowing the grass all around it, so it makes sense to keep that.
Okay, well, it's, it's going to be an ongoing discussion about responsibilities, which always seem to change.
Yes.
And people change, and we appreciate the spirit of cooperation between the town and the employee. So the motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, the motion carries, thank you. And I'm sorry, I overlooked your item before. Now, we're at 4G. Request from the, ooh, Wes Mac PTO, I assume that's Westport Elementary School and McCumber PTO. Do you hang the, another banner, hang the banner promoting their Tough Kids Challenge, hang the banner from May 22nd, 2023, through June 11th, 2023, and for the June 11th, 2023 event? That's clear, isn't it?
No, the banner is promoting is for the June 11th, 2023 event.
Right, because they want to be able to hang it until that.
We've already approved the Tough Kids Challenge, right, haven't we? Or the event? That's, that's, that's the schools, all that they're looking for is to hang it through the day of the event.
Oh, I, I, okay, that's, I see. Yeah, this, the wording was hard to grasp, usually not that difficult, but, uh, I think I got it. Thank you for the clarification. What is the pleasure of the select board?
Um, I'll move it, Chris didn't say when he was going to put his up, maybe you could just put his up, President?
Yeah, he's going to put it up right after, I made it, because they're all three, I kind of coordinated them, so there'll always be two. He asked if three could go, I didn't think three could go.
Okay, no, I don't know.
But he's going to put hers up on June 12th.
Okay, that's great. So I'll move it, and, and with the understanding that they're going to switch to the shellfish on the 12th.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Perhaps we need a banner coordinator, maybe that's something we have.
That's Paul, she's the banner coordinator. We need to make sure it's in our job description, we're wanting to make banners.
Okay, uh, all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, the motion carries, Paul, thank you, thank you for that clarification. 8, 4H, request from the planning board to support, I think it should be the Municipal Vulnerability Program, MVP 2.0 grant, and we have guests from the planning board. Good evening, gentlemen. We know who you are, of course, but for the record, endorse.
Michael Veres, planning board.
And Jim Whiten, Chair of the Planning Board.
Tell us about 2.0.
Yes, so I actually have some handout, if you could pass it around. Um, so the purpose of the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness 2.0 Grant Program is to take, provide resources to towns to update their, essentially update their municipal vulnerability preparedness plans. And so what that looks like for, um, for us is, well, first I'll take a step back. The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan is a plan that outlines Westport's environmental vulnerabilities and establishes some building blocks for, um, developing policies to address those vulnerabilities. And so in updating this plan, um, we will revisit some of those resilience. And so in updating this plan, we will revisit some of those resilience or some of those resilience priorities and reprioritize them. And there will be a larger public engagement process associated with doing this. And so a core value of this program is to have a more social equity approach, so making sure that Westport's environmental justice populations are being brought into the conversation, but also hearing from other voices that aren't always commonly heard in these kinds of planning processes. So whether that be students at the high school, elderly folks, even, you know, we've had our own challenges with trying to get folks from the agricultural community more actively involved in these processes. And so that's the purpose of this grant, is to build, help build our capacity to do some of that engagement work. The first component of this grant, well, so you'll see on this diagram, there are two phases. The first two phases are funded with a flat $45,000. That's the cap, that's the dollar amount that the grantor has said that this should cost. And so that would be the first phase of the grant, which would be for these planning services. The second phase of the grant would fund a seed grant project. The seed grant project is something that I think, I think right now, there's no, we don't have a defined project for that, which is fine. That's something you can develop as you navigate this process. The thought right now is to potentially use these funds to help develop the climate resilience committee's climate resilience plan. I think they are, however, open to considering different avenues as they may arise through this process. And so that seed grant, the dollar amount for that is $50,000 altogether. This is about a two-year grant program. And so tonight, we're asking for the select board to authorize this application.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Whiten?
Yeah. We have done, the first part of the MVP process, we did maybe five years ago. And we, as a secondary application, we got the East Beach MVP grant. And we got a, we got a report on that and gave us some good information. Subsequently, we applied for another grant for the LET, for doing wastewater treatment for there, and they declined to fund that. In our subsequent meetings with the MVP folks, as they were coming up with this, this process, we won't get any more grants unless we do this first. So we can apply for the seed project while we're doing this, but beyond that, we won't be eligible for any more grants from MVP until we finish the MVP 2.0. So I would encourage Westport to focus on this and do it.
And to follow up on what Jim has said, their intention with this is that the communities that initially applied to the MVP, when it first was released, which was Westport, I think Westport was one of the first communities to receive funding for this program. And so the intent is for those initial communities to go through this process, but then every other community across the state will have to go through this process in order to continue to have access.
Questions, comments from the select board?
They're going to help to try to straighten out this corridor against an economic development, so I'll move it and support the letter.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other comments? Any other discussion? Any comments from the public members? This is not a public hearing, but I would entertain comments. Well, go ahead.
So I'm on the climate resilience committee, and I'm pretty sure we talk, we talk about a lot of grants and such on the climate resilience committee, but I think that committee has a lot of really good ideas about, I don't think we're going to have any problem finding a seed project. I think they got a lot of really good ideas from emergency management plan or some of the public health issues coming up with climate resilience. I think it's just a good, a good little, it's a good grant. It's a good way forward for some of the stuff that the climate resilience is trying to do.
There are letters I think I have to sign in here. Is that part of the process?
Once we vote to.
If approved, of course.
It's only you.
Yeah, and is there a reason for that? You know?
Is that the slide?
Not that important, I'll sign it anyway, but it's just unusual. It's just myself.
It's specific, I suppose everyone else on the select board could sign it as well. It specifically asks for, I believe, for the chair of the select board to sign the.
Yeah, no problem. I was just wondering if there was some overpowering reason for that.
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
Well, if one signature will do, we'll do that.
And we already have it printed out.
Yeah. It's ready to sign.
So we must sign it now. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, and we kept saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? The motion carries unanimously. We thank you. Thanks for the good work you do.
The next one.
We're not done.
Yeah, still here. They're asking for your, another signature.
So this is aye. Request from the planning board for the board of selectmen, or somebody from the board of selectmen, to provide a letter of support for its applications to the rural and small towns and Commonwealth Places grant. Mr. Whiten, Mr. Boris, tell us about this.
So that, that letter is actually, if you look behind the MVP promotional handout, that letter is included. I just didn't have the time to include it in your packets last week, so I apologize for not having that ready ahead of time. But yeah, so the Central Village corridor plan is something that the planning office has been working on the past couple of months, just at a very, very preliminary level. But what we're looking to do is develop a long-range plan for streetscape and safety improvements in the main road corridor from about Village Way to Hicks Bridge Road. And so the kinds of questions that we're looking to answer through this process are things like, how can we improve transportation, safety conditions? And if they should be improved, how, how should we go about doing that? How can we support the business community through new infrastructure, new policies? And can we create new assets for residents and visitors? Or should we be doing that? I mean, this is, this is going to be a very open-ended community engagement process, and so the neighborhood will really be driving the recommendations of this plan. So ultimately, we'll create an advisory plan and circulate that around with the select board and planning board for endorsement, but it will be just an advisory plan. But we will be looking, more specifically, we'll be looking at things like walkways, potentially providing public parking, roadway modifications to reduce speeding, looking at the Adamsville and Main intersection to reduce accidents, seeing how we can rework the way that flows, things of that, that nature. And so the, as I said, we're really going to be leaning into that community engagement piece to develop these plan recommendations. Our office's role is really going to just be to facilitate this process. It's going to be the community who really ultimately decides what those policy recommendations should be. You know, naturally, what will kind of be, be the bumpers for the process a little bit to say, okay, this is not financially feasible, or, you know, we'll have a consulting engineer to help out with this as well, and they'll say this isn't, you know, feasible when it comes to engineering. But yeah, it'll be a neighborhood-driven plan. And so, as I said, we are going to be applying, or we are going to be looking for funds for a consulting engineer. We are going to apply to the rural and small towns grant for those, those funds to acquire a consulting engineer. In your packets, there was a budget, or a budget, a quote from Par, Par Consulting? Par engineers?
Par engineering.
Pari?
I don't know how to say the name.
I don't either. But anyway, that's, that's where this dollar amount came, came from. We did ask for quotes from other, other folks, but this was the most reasonable quote that we had received. So what we're going to be requesting through the rural and small towns grant is $56,550 for the consulting engineering services. And we will also be applying to a grant program called the Commonwealth Places Grant. This will be a grant that'll be substantially less. It'll be a $5,000 request. It'll be used to, those funds will be used to develop renderings. That'll help imagine the planned recommendations. An interesting part of this grant program is this will kind of get us our foot in the door to potentially partner with, well, it'll get our foot in the door. So it's like a, it's a two-step grant program. You come up with a, what's called a placemaking installation, so that would be things like public art, community gardens, or just like nice landscape gardens, things of that nature. And so you would come up with a plan for that, and then in the following year, you would apply for funds to actually implement that. And so I've talked to the Westport Cultural Council. They're pretty interested in partnering with that. And so, yeah, so that's, it's kind of a two-part that we're applying to two different grant programs.
I'm sorry, you can say, is different than the prior item? You're talking about two in this item?
Yeah.
And the rural and small town?
Yeah, it's two different grant programs, but it's all going to be part of the same project.
Is this, wasn't there a, somebody appointed to this position in the state recently? Didn't you see something?
It's a position that is supposed to appoint somebody soon. I don't know if they did it yet. I asked the senator and Representative Schmidt last week. They said it's coming soon.
This is the same entity, rural and small towns?
Yeah, that's, they work under that guise, yes. It should be under that.
Okay. Continue if you wish.
The total, the total product, project cost will be around $70,000 for this. We are asking that the select board authorize us to request $8,500 in American Rescue Plan Act dollars. The grant application will give special consideration to projects that have over 10% match, and so that would, would get us a 15% match. And.
Clarification on that ARPA, A R P A. You're specifically requesting the money from that source? And why so? And why wouldn't it come from the state program that you've been describing here?
We need a local match, so we can use the ARPA for a local match. Or it could come out of the selectmen's budget if you like.
Well.
Or a grant budget.
Well, we have a new grant budget too, right?
Yeah.
So if, either.
Yeah, I was just curious as to why ARPA and not a grant from another source? You've answered the question. But with ARPA, that would be a select board action, usually followed by a committee meeting to discuss it and recommend it to the select boards. You don't need approval on that tonight, do you?
We need, for you to sign the letter of support, we need, Westport's commitment to come up with a local match.
Okay.
We'll be making a request to the planning board tomorrow to request the ARPA dollars.
Will you repeat that?
The chorus kicked in.
Sorry. Well, tomorrow, tomorrow night is the, the planning board is meeting, and so we'll be making the formal, well, they'll be voting on whether or not we should request those dollars, those ARPA dollars from the select board.
I see, okay. What is the pleasure of the select board?
Well, I mixed it up a little bit last time, but I thought they were connected. This is actually separate. The other one was climate resilience. And this, obviously, I do support, this is the one that's connected to economic development. I misspoke on the earlier one, so I do support it, and I'd like it to see it go forward, so I'll move it.
I'll second, but can I just clarify? So this is the letter of support, because I don't, we don't have on the agenda to approve the ARPA money.
Correct.
Okay, so this is just the letter of support that we're.
Yeah, I'm going to approve the funding.
Okay.
And that'll continue to move this forward, and we'll have to deal with the ARPA thing separately. But I think there'll be a lot of interest in that. So motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion or questions from the select board of these gentlemen or others? Okay, do you want to say something further?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide some expectations about next steps. So the, the grant decision should be made this fall, and we'll start doing some initial more formal public engagement at the end of summer, probably early fall. We've done some preliminary surveying of the, of the neighborhood, and we've also sat down with a number of different business owners as well, just to get some preliminary thoughts and generate some ideas. But the formal process will take place closer to when those grant decisions are released.
If I could just add something. The, if people with a long enough memory can remember the sidewalk committee from years ago that worked for seven years to come up with a sidewalk plan in Central Village. The sidewalk committee got, I think, to a 75% engineered plan?
Correct.
And they applied, the town applied for a tip from the state highway funds and were granted the money. And then the select board voted three to two not to do it. So we have all that information in terms of setbacks, where sidewalks could go, what the path forward would be to do that if part of this, the results of this process come up with sidewalk plans. They will be using that older information, because nothing has changed in the roads.
Yeah. When that, that previous plan did not move forward, there were some concerns from some major commercial, major commercial stakeholders in the quarter. And we've sat down with them and have had some productive discussions, and they're, they're open to seeing some infrastructure installments in there, as to how it actually is implemented and what those look like. You know, those will be questions that'll be smoothed out in the public engagement process.
But assuming that's sideways, that's just one.
One project.
That's just one.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, okay, I get it. Good. Okay, motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
Just, I know there's some people at Village Way that'll help to forums and whatnot. They've gone crazy trying to get it done.
You picked the right guy.
Yeah. Sure, right.
Okay, I think it's time to vote. All in favor, and we kept saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously, Paul. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for the hard work. Michael goes to a lot of meetings, including bicycle and all the others.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Good evening, thank you. Next item is, we have two discussion items. First was 5A, Carol Freitas, the Veterans Agent, to discuss update on Memorial Day events. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. So just to introduce myself, for those who may not know me, Carol Freitas, the Westport Veteran Service Officer. So we have a busy couple of weeks coming up for Memorial Day. This coming Saturday, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts will be working with me to flag Linden Grove and Maple Grove at 8:00 AM, and then I'm going to rush over to Beech Grove for 9:00 AM to do the flagging over there. Just so people know, we do have about 1,300 veterans buried here in Westport throughout 20 different cemeteries. So the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts do those three, and I do the rest by myself. Excuse me. So that's this Saturday coming up. And then May 27th, which is the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, we're having our annual reclining ceremonies. And we did change the order this year, only because the Vietnam Vet, the VAN is now housed at the VFW, so we are starting there. So just so everybody knows, it's 9:00 AM at the VFW. From there, we go to the American Legion for 9:15, and then LaTessa Square, which is at Tickle Road and Oak Avenue for 9:30. And then we go to the Fontaine Bridge, the northbound side, for 10 o'clock. And then we go to Westport Point for 10:15. And at each location, we do a little ceremony, which consists of the reading of a poem. We place a wreath, with the exception of Westport Point, where we toss a bouquet into the harbor to signify the service members lost at sea. We do a rifle salute, and then we play taps. And residents and the select board, everybody is invited to join us for, at each of the stops, or at any one of the stops of their choosing. And I hope to see a lot of people out there. And then Monday, May 29th, weather permitting, we will have our parade and ceremony. So if we do have the parade, it will start at 9:30 here at the town hall. I do ask anybody who is going to be marching in the parade to be here no later than 9:00 AM. And then we will do a brief ceremony at the World War I monument. Again, it will be the placing of a wreath, the reading of a poem, a rifle salute, playing of taps. And then we'll march down to Beech Grove Cemetery for the ceremony, which will take place approximately 10 o'clock at our new veterans monument, which I'm still so proud of that.
Should be.
Yes, yes.
So. So if we do have to cancel the parade because of inclement weather, we will still hold the ceremony at the Town Hall Annex Gym. I have reserved that. I will be posting any updates about that on the Veteran Services page on the town's website. And also, I have a VSO, Westport VSO Facebook page, so I'll be posting any updates to let the community know about that change. I did ask Mr. Chair about a speaker from the Board of Selectmen at the town meeting. I don't know if somebody has agreed to do that. I'm just waiting on that information.
Well, I'm willing to do that, but if anybody else would like to speak, that's fine with me, too.
I'm not going to try like crazy to get here. I'm going to be out of state that Friday, so...
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
All right, sign me up.
Great, thank you very much.
I've had the honor of doing that before. I've enjoyed it.
And has had a speech.
Oh, no.
So that is the next couple of weeks. It's going to be very busy and finalizing all of the plans. And I did want to mention, I have found this online app to create a database of all of the veterans buried here in town, so that...
It was a different person, too.
So when we flag, the Beech Grove especially, because that's the largest of our cemeteries, and we have the Boy Scouts do it, inevitably, veterans' gravesites get messed, and I get a lot of phone calls. And I've been trying to come up with ways to resolve that. So I thought, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, they always have phones in their hands. So I found an app, and I've been busy putting all of the veterans in there, where they're buried, pictures of their headstones. And all they have to do is pull it up and just click the button that says that it's flagged. And then I can see it.
I've got one for you, Ms. Chair.
Okay. So I'm hoping that that solves that problem, because I can just go on and look the little flags and see as they're flagging, and it'll just automatically populate right on my phone. So that's something I'm hoping will solve that problem. So busy couple of weeks.
I think one year, didn't we have the Memorial Day event? It rained and we headed to the Annex?
That was last year, yes. In 2022.
Couple of years ago. I guess the walking by, Justin Latini was happy.
No, last year we had a parade. 2021, we had indoors. 2020, we did the virtual.
That's right.
Where we pre-recorded it. And then 2019, which was my first year, we did a parade. So this will be my third parade in five more days since I started this position.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great, great.
So you got the mics? Like, are we, how confident are we with the sound system?
I did buy a brand-new sound system right before we did the Veterans Monument unveiling. It is, it can be plugged in, but it also is battery as well. I'm going to be making sure that those are charged up. It's a wired microphone, not wireless, so we don't have that problem with the batteries or whatever the issue is. So I hopefully resolve that problem.
Carol, can we get some cones this year? Remember last year, somebody blew a tire going on a cone?
Oh.
So maybe if the Highway Department, we missed a few cones.
Okay.
Just on near the edge of Nick, we have the ceremony.
Yes.
Because they pull up the drop-off people that can't walk that way, and that's how it happened last year.
Okay, yes, I will, I would definitely talk to the Highway Department about that.
I like it.
Okay, questions, comments?
Thank you for organizing.
Thank you, yeah. I don't think we need to vote here.
My grandfather, World War II veteran.
We look forward to it, and I look forward to it myself, to be there.
So I do have some other events coming up, if you want me to mention them now. So Flag Day is June 14th, which is a Wednesday. We will be doing the flag disposal ceremony at the American Legion on Saturday, June 10th, at 11:00 AM. So everybody is invited to that. If you, if you're gonna go, just let me know, because we are going to have pizza afterwards. So I just want to give them a head count.
Can you just clarify, can you bring flags that day? You could have an advance.
You can bring flags that day, absolutely. Or you can bring them to me, and I will get them there. I've already brought all of the flags that were in the hallway at the Annex are now over there. June is the recertification for all of our Chapter 115 cases. We currently have 33 recipients, not including the spouses. I think we have seven spouses as well, seven married couples. So I will be meeting with all of them in June to recertify their continued benefits. I do have VSO training in June also, from the 12th to the 15th. So I will be down in Hyannis for those four days. This next item is not a Westport thing, but it's for women veterans. So in case anybody's watching is a woman veteran or knows a woman veteran, there is the statewide Women Veterans Conference on June 17th. It's a Saturday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's in Quincy. Usually, they have it in Worcester or Springfield, so I'm happy that it's much closer this year. The Fourth of July Parade, I know Caitlin is going to be coming in front of the Board of Selectmen, I believe in two weeks, for approval for that. So if it is approved, you know, I'm looking for veterans who want to ride up near the front of the parade with all of the veterans. They can contact me to sign up. And then the last item we have coming up is our third annual Veterans Appreciation Cookout, which will be on September 16th. We are doing a little bit different this year. Normally, we would charge family members $5. Last year, we actually raised enough money that we can do the veteran and one family member for free. And if they want to bring any additional family members, it'll be a $5 charge for them. We do burgers, hot dogs, chips, soda, the water, things like that. And that will be at the VFW. So have a lot going on over the next few months.
We do. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item is 5V. This is a discussion that we put on because of the town meeting and the actions that took place there, particularly on Article Number Six, if you recall, where the voters overwhelmingly supported that. And that, of course, starts us discussing the override. I didn't put this on with the idea of making decisions tonight. It was to start the conversation, look to Jim, as we have in the past, for timelines, timeframes, so on and so forth. And then perhaps the next time, or time is out, whatever, we'll then do what we have to do in terms of a votes. It is the Select Board, and only the Select Board, that can decide on an override ballot, to be placed on the ballot. So tonight is really to just, to get the ball rolling. And I would ask Jim if you could maybe give us sort of a very simple outline as to how this would work and what the timeframes might be.
So the timeline, town meeting appropriated the funds for an override, May 2nd. We now have to, or the town would now have to vote at an election to approve the override. The appropriation is good until September 15th. If an election is not held before then, we would have to have another town meeting to appropriate the funds. So under the current appropriation, we have till September 15th. In general, the earlier we can have the election, the sooner we can get it into the budget. The fiscal year starts July 1st, especially with the schools and some of the other departments. Again, the earlier, if we have the override earlier in the process, as opposed closer to September 15th, they can utilize those funds to supplement their budget earlier. So that would, that would be a help to some of the departments. Right now, I sent a draft question up to KP Law. They're currently reviewing it, on the specific language it has to be done with these votes. I should have that, I thought I'd have it back tonight. I didn't. I should have it back within the week, so that I'll be ready for the next meeting. There's also a 34-day requirement from when the Board of Selectmen approves the wording of the ballot question for the town clerk to get it on an election. So once, once the board approves it, they have at least 34 days to get the ballots done. I think the question is reviewed by the state. So the earliest we could possibly do it would be probably the beginning of July, if we're looking at the May meeting. The end of July would probably be more reasonable. Right now, we're kind of short-staffed. We will be short-staffed in the Registra's office for, for about a month. We'll actually have no staff. And then the town clerk's office, we have a new town clerk, and she's looking to hire who we'll be interviewing this week. So she's also catching up with some of the, she's doing a great job, by the way, but there's a lot to learn. And a new election would be a burden on everybody if it's held too soon. So I think the end of July would be reasonable, or any time after that. Again, there is a thing with, the sooner we have it, the quicker we can get it into the budget, so...
Now, you mentioned KP Law. I went through my files, and KP Law, I believe, sent us something from the Department of Local Services, DLS, and had the outline of explaining the process for overrides and excluded debt measures. And that was handy. I'd just request that you put that in the package for next time, just as a refresher.
That's all I have.
Questions, comments, discussion?
I, I think July 25th is probably the best time. We might luck out, and the weather won't be ridiculous. It probably will be in August. Also, it's in the middle of the summer, as far as the schools are cleaning and whatnot, and we could probably work around it. There is summer school, but there is some classes in the buildings, I think, all, all summer. But I think the 25th is what we should shoot for.
I, I agree. I think the departments need the money as soon as they can get it, but you don't want to put too much pressure on the clerk's office. So I think July 25th sounds reasonable to me.
Does that make sense to you, Jim? Based on your schedule and everything? As you've outlined?
That's doable.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Here's the school stuff, and everybody a chance to catch their breath before this comes at them, and before you get the bullets over the schools again. So I think it will work out.
And the wording, I understand, is prescribed by the state? But we have to put in our numbers, I guess?
So they have a general format. I had some questions, and that's why I sent it up, as to, we appropriated money for the school, the town, and also the stabilization account. I just want to make sure we get the wording correct. And it mainly focuses on that first year. We also have the amount that the Board of Selectmen will have to agree on as to how much that override will be. We appropriated $1 million at town meeting, but I think in general, there's been discussions of a $3 million override, with the additional funds kicking in the following years.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's been a lot of the conversation, of course, but that was not really Article Six. The way it was done, as we discussed, was to focus in on how the money would be spent in the first year. But it was understood that it would be a multi-year process here. Okay. Any comments from visitors?
My name is Betty Slade. 34 days, I wasn't clear from when to when, from when the Board of Selectmen approve everything and say we're going to have an override of a certain amount, within 34 days? Or that's the, what is it?
Once, once, one, sorry, if the Board of Selectmen approve the amount and approves the wording of the question, the earliest it could be on the ballot would be 34 days after that vote.
Okay, so...
The earliest?
A limit.
The earliest.
Earliest.
Okay, that's, and so the board will decide in advance and put on the ballot how much the total override will be and how it will be allocated for the first year. How about the second, third year?
I don't believe we can allocate it for the second and third year. Town meeting will do that.
That's my question. See, I know in other towns, they do, do say what they're going to do with it. And are we talking about specifically, we're going to say what it goes to?
So the first year, I think, we're required to, and that's what other communities have. I don't believe they've appropriated, they can't appropriate it for future years.
So you're...
But that is one of the questions I'm asking.
So you would be following what was done at town meeting, the allocation at town meeting? Is that correct? Or you have any alternative to that, or?
You couldn't change that unless there was another town meeting to reappropriate the funds?
Yeah, I understand that, but, so you're just going to go with this town meeting decision, is what you're recommending?
That would be my recommendation, but it's the board's decision as to...
I'm confused.
I have a question.
Well, go ahead.
No, I mean, the same question, a similar question. Town meeting already appropriated the money, right? The override doesn't, why, you don't even have to put anything about how you're spending the money on there. So are you saying that we would put how on the override?
It is.
Where it was appropriated?
And that's what I've asked, right? I'm looking for clarification. Normally, in the first year, they say that it'll be used for school funds, town funds, and sometimes they put stabilization as well. Sometimes it's just general. I've seen them where they just appropriated for town departments. After that first year, though, I don't think there's a mechanism to allocate it.
Well, there is a mechanism with the override. For the override, for the future years, it changes the levy, and is a permanent, unlike excluded debt, is a permanent feature to this. So we don't, that's unknown. But regarding the first year, that was specified by town meeting. So why would we be entertaining, I'm not asking anybody here, or Turner, or why would it be entertaining anything other than what was approved in Article Six?
Well, I, I guess, further to that, we have talked about a $3 million override, and town meeting has a $1 million appropriation. I'm totally fine with how we appropriated at a town meeting. But there's nothing that, like, would, if you put 1 million, if you put an explanation that's $3 million override, here's how 1 million in year one, does that mean a subsequent town meeting, like, if, if somebody were to call a special town meeting, that they wouldn't be able to spend the money?
Depends how specific the wording is. And again, this is what I'm trying to clarify with.
I mean, I would like to lock it up, because, because, because what could happen is that, so we appropriated at a town meeting. We have had the situation happen before, where we had to call a special town meeting based on a citizen petition, right? So citizen petition can ask for appropriations, right? Or, and maybe appropriations aren't, maybe you can't do that at a special town meeting? I don't know. I'm fine with locking it in. I just want to make sure that, I want to make sure it's actually locked in, if we, or if we can put it there.
So I can ask that as well, is if we can be specific on the dollar amounts in the ballot question for the first year. I don't believe we can do it after the first year.
Okay.
So may I have a follow-up?
Continue.
So on the ballot question, you will have this information. Will you be able to have other information? Will you be able to explain it? How, how are, is that, I may be those are the questions you need to ask, Jim, but I would suspect it would be a good idea if this could be explained very carefully. So in two weeks, you meet again. Will you make final decisions then?
I don't know. We would do what we can at the next meeting, but we're not committing to that tonight.
So...
We need, we need to get here from Jim and the lawyers.
So, okay. So you're not sure? So it'll maybe more than two weeks before we know whether, but it seems like you're saying there will be an override question. Have you really voted on that yet? I mean, will, will we, you vote tonight that there will be an override question?
No. Tonight is informational only. I don't know if you were here, but I pointed out earlier that this is a discussion tonight. There's no action taken.
Yeah, I heard that, but it's just come back to some, some specifics, and the whole question is, you sound like there's going to be an override, so, but it isn't a done deal yet, okay?
No, it's not a done deal, but you, you, I think we could fairly say that there's sentiment toward what the town meeting approved, and there has been sentiment expressed by members of this board, either collectively, and meaning it was news, I won't speak for him, but we've all expressed support, as well as the Finance Committee. So there's more to come on this, because we could get more details. But the goal is to start the conversation tonight, as we're doing, and get the ball rolling, and so that we can then take whatever necessary steps and votes in the proper order and do it, do it correctly. Now, I don't have, I don't have some of the answers that we posed tonight, but you probably will.
We'll have the questions for you for the next meeting.
Okay, further discussion. Manny?
Yeah, I think probably what Betty's getting at, I mean, if we, if we have hopes of getting this override, we need to get that information before we decide, or get it out to the public, so when people start questioning, then. Like this is, it's information, I think it's a big thing, if you can get it out there.
Well, speaking only for myself on that point, I don't think the override will pass unless there's a strong marketing campaign, with a lot of information, getting it out there. And we, we learned that a little bit from Diamond. That was a different deal, but the Diamond measure failed last year. When it came back, there was more discussion, more press on it, road sign, signs, and so on and so forth. So we learned that this is not going to pass unless there's a lot of information to a lot of people who have a multitude of questions.[1727.91] of people who have a multitude of questions. So I think next time, we should be talking about how are we gonna go about this, and who are the players, and like a game plan, almost like a Gantchar or something like that. And I think your point is well-taken.
Well, I think the most important thing we could do on the 30th is finalize the question and set the date, because part of the marketing campaign needs to be, go vote July 25th, right? So the sooner, so it sounds like, I mean, obviously, we can't approve it now, we don't have the ballot question in front of us to approve, but I think the sooner, I think it's important on the 30th that we set the date.
Okay.
Unless we have, but like, to your, to your kind of, if we don't hear from KP Law, and we don't have the exact wording of the question, and we don't, then, you know, then we might not be able to do it, but I think we should target on the 30th.
Yeah, I agree.
Just to check, can we make that clear the day of the compliment, that it's important?
Yeah, I'll have that, hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everybody involved, know what's going on. Sounds good.
Okay, further discussion. Any comments from the public? Thank you for your earlier comments. Okay. No vote needed tonight. We know what the work we have to do, and we're anxious to get going. So that finishes that discussion. The next item is 6, the Town Administrator Report.
Yeah, just a couple of things, and a couple have already been discussed, so we can kind of work right through those, but the Diamond School project, we received a letter from the Diamond School Building Committee that the project may be delayed slightly because they're going to redesign the, I guess, they had germ, sorry, geothermal wellfields that they were going to use for the, for the heat system there at the school, and I guess the cooling system as well. The Water Department, they had some concerns about that in Fall River, so they are going to remove that from the design, and that's going, that could have some implications as to the schedule, but they're hoping it won't change it too much. There's a meeting tomorrow, breakfast meeting scheduled for tomorrow, if anybody's interested in tending at Diamond, and some of that will be discussed. The Veterans Day has already been noted by Carol. Lifeguards, just a reminder, the town is still looking to hire lifeguards for Cheryan West Beach.
Sure. This says Veterans Day. You're talking about-
It says that, yes. He made a mistake.
You want, yeah. Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. Yes.
Yeah, it's covered.
Lifeguards, again, we're looking for lifeguards for Cheryan West Beach. Employment applications can be found on the town website. Beach Committee has been working with Dana over in the Recreation Department to see if they can coordinate that. I know Dana's put some feelers out, there's some college websites, I guess, for job applicants that she's put that out. She's also trying to, she reached out to all the lifeguards from last year. We may be back at the next meeting. Reached out to the head lifeguard from last year to see if he'd be willing to work maybe part-time to kind of coordinate and bridge the gap. He's been there for a number of years and kind of has the system down, and even if he could help us out for this next year, to see how that doing, the change in God, as you say, might be much easier, so. He was gonna get back to us, but it sounded like he may be willing to do that. That'd be a big help going forward.
If I may on this lifeguard question, the last, when Mr. Sean Leach was here, we talked about the age, minimum age, which was 18, but I think the state changed it to 16. Do you know if that's generated some activity?
I don't know if there's any specific, we did check the regulations, Dana's looked into it, there's a couple more requirements that they have to do, but we can go down to 16 for highways.
Okay. Thank you.
Gifford Road, Route 177 intersection, I met with Mass Highway last week, on Friday, with power engineering. Senator Roderick said earmarked $150,000 for the improvements at Gifford Road and Route 177. We met with Mass Highway to see what improvements they'd be willing to do. Ideally, I'd like to see Mass Highway kind of take the lead on it. If we take the lead, we have to go through the comprehensive design process, which is about a three- to six-year design process for anything we do. If we can get Mass Highway to design the upgrades, it goes much quicker. We can do it more as a permit as opposed to a tip pod project, which is transportation improvement project, similar to what we're doing with the roundabout on the 177 and Robert Street, and I think we can get more bang for the buck. I think we can get more done with 150. If we go through the design project, that 150-plus will get eaten up just in the design alone. It'd be nice if we can put some of that towards construction. So that's what we're pushing. And Mass Highway met with us, they're gonna get back to us hopefully in the next week or two. And the Highway Department, it's on the website, and it changes, so I didn't put any specifics in here as to what streets they're working on, because based on the schedule, that will change, but they've just started their seasonal work with their state contract with the Chapter 90 funding. They're also doing some work for the Planning Board through that same contract, because the prices in that contract were very good to finish up an old subdivision that's been on the books for years, so that is currently underway, and you can go on the website and get specific information as to when that work's gonna start. That's all I have.
Any questions, discussion?
Jim, at 177 and Gifford, I would suggest a smaller project they could do is at least get the newer flashing lights that says they'd be dangerous intersection ahead coming down 177. Those are people that aren't really familiar with the area, because I know there's another motorcycle crash a couple of years ago. It might be tougher heading toward Tivon, because this house is there, and the lights might be flashing, but toward where the medical center is coming down, you would think it would just make sense, because they're coming down the hill, they're usually moving along, everybody's, uses that, most of the people that are from out of town either heading to Dartmouth or Tivon. So if we could get one of those newer LED flashing lights. I mean, we need the same thing on the curbs, the curb going on 195, too, but that's a whole different ass, where the Chevron signs get knocked down every weekend, so. But I mean, if they could just do a small thing like that, it would help.
I will mention it to them.
Okay, is that it for the Town Administrator's Report? If so, we move ahead to Item 7, the approval of minutes, two sets of minutes, Manny or Paula, who's?
Manny wasn't here on the first. He wasn't here on the first, so.
I move approval on the minutes of May 1st.
Second.
Motion made in second, the discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none, unanimous. And B, is there a motion in that regard? You just had May 1, right?
Yeah.
But there's May 2, right? No?
May 2nd was the, was the small meeting right before.
I move approval on the minutes of May 2nd.
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded. All in favor, if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, none? So both, yeah, that was a small meeting, but they're important.
Yes.
Okay, report on the bill warrant. This is usually the highlight.
It was, it's done, everybody was paid, everything looked good, and it was signed.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 9 is Selectmen liaison committee reports and suggestions for future agenda discussion. I'll start with Ann.
I had a Fordville House meeting. They are just actively making sure that at the very least, they are thought about in the whole high school process. They just want to make sure that they're at least in the mix as this group discusses what their options may be.
So the Roadhouse has been getting a lot of press.
Yeah, it's moving along. Even through the cold, they still kept going.
Is that it?
From me, yeah.
So we had a climate resilience meeting last week, still a really big group. It's informative, a lot of people looking at different ways to improve the town's position due to global warming. We have an Internet Advisory Committee meeting coming up on Thursday, and we're gonna talk about next steps, and we've invited Entry Point to come in and talk about what their, some of the work they're doing with some of the other communities, that kind of thing. David Cole's really been involved in the outreach for the coalition. And I think that's, School Building Committee, we had a meeting, we had a steering committee meeting. It's still going on. We still paying some bills and trying to get the last things wrapped up, but, yeah, so School Building Steering Committee is fine.
Thank you.
Still under budget.
Well, that's good news. Keep us a good word.
You have to get out.
We'd like to end the project. The general contractor, I think, would very much like to be over with the project.
I guess I'm next. Jim didn't mention it, but we are working on an energy, the selection of an energy company to assist us, and we have a meeting this week. We reviewed seven candidates who will do energy work and project management. Saul is tied in with the Green Communities, it's a good thing, and it was a worthy effort, a lot of reading. Each, I'm not looking for sympathy, but each proposal was 100 pages long. However, I have to do a few of the-
Thank you.
You get the hang of it.
Nice when you retire.
You get the hang of it. The other thing is, the Audit Committee does have a meeting scheduled for May 22nd, that's the first one in a while. There were questions raised about, you know, what's on the website. I point out that we received the reports from our town auditor, Roselli and Associates. We received it in draft form, so now the process is for the Audit Committee to review it, have an interview with Mr. Roselli, and go through the items. And then, as you know, we always ask the Select Board, like, to hear from Mr. Roselli, he usually appears by Squawk Box or that, and to answer any of your questions. And then I, at some point, that's finalized, but they're already on the website, I do believe, as draft items, so that's fine. They can, they don't change very much, maybe a typo or two, but that's about all. So that's coming up on May 22nd, and it's an important piece of work for the Audit Committee. So that's my report. Steve?
Your Infrastructure Oversight Committee, that both Manny and I are on that, went over how things are moving forward, they're trying to work on some land for the pump house. We're gonna have another meeting June 22nd, and then we're gonna try to get an idea on the costs involved to the people. Right now, we're gearing toward a town meeting to bring a question forward to get the project going, while they're searching for a lot of money to try to get it going. Bob Daley, obviously, is working hard on that. So we keep plugging forward with that. You know, the other things is we're worried about stormwater and whatnot, maybe he's got some border health stuff there, too, so we're, we're plugging forward. We hope to be able to take maybe July and August off, so people can take vacations, and then probably have a forum really for September or October.
Very good. Anything else? Manny?
Again, just on that economic oversight for infrastructure, we did invite Phil Weinberg, who's gonna come and talk with us on the next one, so I think that can be very productive.
Okay. All right, that's it for that item, number nine. So the next one, 10, is comments and statements from the public.
All of them?
Yeah, everything you want.
Maybe, maybe can we get in a future meeting just to straighten the Opera funding and what else he was left, and answer whatever result they have of the funds that we still have.
Yeah, okay. Well, we can take that as a future-
Yeah, just get an update, because I don't think Manny's been updated either, so.
And the appointments, too.
Yeah, I know.
Our work's gonna be in progress.
Yeah, she's been sending emails, yelling at the chairman to get their stuff in, so.
Yeah.
I'll vote for her.
But regarding Opera, are we gonna have another meeting shortly? We haven't had one in a while, right? Did I miss one?
You did not miss one.
Call me.
Maybe next Wednesday. Or this Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Okay. That's good to see. You know the date on that, offhand?
The 23rd? No, the 30th. The 31st.
No, no.
No.
The 24th. Can't read the calendar.
Yeah, I think that works. Okay, well, we can, we can set that up. All right, so there are no comments and statements. Item 11 is Board's Committees Commission's vacancy list, it's here. It's there for all to see, and we are always looking for wonderful people to come forward and offer their talents to the town of Westport. Lots of opportunities, so please give that, you tell the public, please give that full consideration. It's fun, you meet nice people, and you learn a lot. The last item is topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I'm not aware of any. Paula, do you have any?
No.
Anybody else? Jim, that's it? And as mentioned earlier, there is no executive session tonight, I'm sorry to say. I don't know what you're gonna do with your spare time, but there's no more football.
Doing football season, yeah.
U.S. F.?
Get out before 9:00. Yeah, no.
So it would be time for, if it pleases the crowd, a adjournment.
So will.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Motion passes, the meeting is concluded. I thank you.